To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. I'd like to welcome our deputy treasurer here tonight, Michelle Masti, who's filling in for Allison. Ms. Masti, can you take the role, please? Here.
Mayor Protem Squires.
Here.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember McCarge.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Okay, next we'll move on to item four, approval of the agenda as presented.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the agenda for Monday, February eighth, two thousand and sixteen, as presented.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Lynch, supported by Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table, from the general public? Ms. Masti?
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye, motion passes seven zero. Move on to item five, community events. We have Mr. Hank Cable from the Lions Club.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
I'm here tonight on behalf of the Garden City Lions Club. Very proud to announce our twenty-fifth annual pancake breakfast. And that is going to be on March sixth, it's a Sunday morning, from eight to eleven thirty. We're fortunate enough to have the relationship with our Garden City Fire Department. And the, our special guest cooks are going to be the Garden City firefighters, and they come down every year on their own time, I might add, and cook for us. And it's five dollars, it is at the Moose Lodge on Ford Road, just east of Middlebelt, on the south side of the street. And we've been having it there for quite a few years, plenty of parking in the back. It's five dollars for adults, two dollars for kids under twelve. And it's all you can eat, we've got pancakes, sausage, scrambled eggs, juice, coffee, milk, et cetera. This is the ad that you'll probably see around the city. We're also selling placemat ads, I don't know if they can see that or not. But these are the businesses, this is their ad from last year, these are all the businesses and individuals that support us by giving us a donation for the placemat ad, and we encourage everybody that comes through the door to take this with us, because there's a lot of businesses in there, that are in Garden City. And that's all I have, sir. Any questions?
Look forward to it, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, Chief.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I hope the participants will forgive me if I get something wrong, but the state Palm Championships were recently held. Statewide championships. First place in the middle school position was Garden City Middle School. First place in the varsity, Class A varsity, was Garden City Varsity. Also in the Class B section, Divine Child, which has a lot of Garden City participants in it, Divine Child Varsity took first place. And in the middle school division, and I hope I've got this right, Grand ledge Middle School took first place, which happens to be coached by Devon Dodge, the daughter of a long-serving councilmember, Jody Dodge, and I just wanted to let everybody know, we're pretty proud of that group.
Very good, thank you. Next, we have Phil McKenna here from McKenna Associates. Phil, do you want to introduce Mr. Elliott, our new planner, to the city?
Thank you, Mayor, council people. Earlier this week, I think it was, we informed the city manager that Amy Neary, who has been our project manager in Garden City, in terms of planning and zoning, for past quite a few years. She's been with McKenna Associates for seventeen years. She announced about ten days ago or so that she had, she was going to leave the firm. She has a new position as the Planning Director for West Bloomfield Township. So we wish her well and thank her for all her good work. And we have a solid replacement, in fact, he was in West Bloom, he still is in West Bloomfield Township. Our firm helps them also. So his name is Greg Elliott. He's a seasoned planner. And he has an interesting background, he was the Planning Director for Pittsfield Charter Township. It's a community about same population as Garden City, bigger area. And during that time, experienced, and still is, experiencing quite a bit of growth, greenfield development and redevelopment along Jackson Road and so forth. And we did their master plan, and we've worked there and so on, so we know his work. He took about ten or twelve years off to practice law as a real estate attorney. And we were fortunate enough to lure him to our firm six, seven months ago. And since that time, he has been actively engaged in providing his experience and his skills in two municipalities around in our market. He has two master's degrees, well, he has a J.D. degree, a law degree, and also a master's in public administration. And as well as his planning experience. We're quite confident, he's already been over here, working with Amy and our other staff here to make certain that the transition to a new director for planning goes smoothly, and it works out for everybody. So I'll be glad to respond to any questions, he's here tonight. Greg, I don't know whether you want to say anything or not, he's a, he's...
I don't have the microphone.
Well, it's up to you.
Go ahead. Thanks, I'm excited to be here and helping y'all out, and for those who don't know, we're here on Wednesdays, certainly all morning, and sometimes well into the afternoon doing office hours, and we'll be happy to help you with any questions or concerns that you have.
We look forward to working with you, anybody have any questions for Mr. Elliott? You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we will move on to item six, comments from state and county officials, I don't see anybody here tonight. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on, we have no petitions or communications. Next, we'll open up the public hearing for zoning map amendment, request zoning map from R three multiple to family C three for three one four five zero Ford Road. Anybody wishing to speak, please come to the podium.
What is that?
This is the vacated alley on the corner of Ford and Merriman, behind three one four five oh Ford Road, that's that sewer business. And we're rezoning that alley from residential R three to commercial three. They want to put in a urgent care salon and medical spa. Anybody else wishing to speak on this public hearing? Mr. Moller?
Just want to know if I got a firm commitment or is it going to be another boondoggle?
We have a firm commitment.
Firm commitment?
Yep.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I will close out the public hearing, we'll move on to item nine A, our consent agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch?
I move for the approval of our consent agenda, item nine A, one and two.
Support from Councilmember Kerwin.
And if I could read the mayoral appointments.
Just going to ask you to read those, please.
We are, the mayor is looking to confirm the reappointment of Michael Jones and Nora Fix to the Commission on Aging, with the term to expire three thirty-one nineteen. And confirm Mark Jacobs as the council liaison to the Recreation Committee. And to confirm the mayoral appointment of Pat McCarge as the delegate to the CDGB Advisory Council, I think it should be BG.
Yeah, I got it backwards.
Yes. No, I did.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Lynch, supported by Councilmember Kerwin. Any further comments from the table, from the general public? Ms. Masti?
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye, motion passes seven zero. Move on to item B, our study session. Item one, report on locations without sidewalks in Garden City. Chief? Do you want to have Mr. Roni come up on this, or?
Sure, he can probably come up and summarize this. And this is not necessarily an item, as you're aware, that requires action tonight.
Right, just a report out for council members.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Mr. Roni.
The report in front of you contains a map with all the city corridor sections, quarter of a mile square. And Hennessy Engineers did a survey and delineated all the areas that have no sidewalk, or where there are sidewalk ramps needed. This towards an eye to eventually getting a long-term program going with our sidewalk program as funding allows, to address the sidewalks and moving us towards a walkable city, every last block.
Any comments or questions from council member? Councilmember King?
I'm really pleased to see this whole thing, because it is what we need. And having this separation, as far as having a sidewalk here and here with nothing in between, is really difficult, especially if you have any handicap whatsoever, so it's about time we looked at it that way. Thank you.
You're welcome.
This will be safer for our children and our pedestrians if and when we do this, and it will also make us ADA compliant. My understanding is the city will pay for all the ramps at the intersections, the handicap ADA ramps?
That has been our practice, yes.
Okay, so...
Are you able to get any kind of a grant to help us with this, or?
I don't believe there's a grant.
Mr. Roni?
We...
I'm sorry.
Mr. Roni, the question is, did you get us some grant money for this?
There are various sidewalk grants out there, at this point in time, we've not been able to procure one yet.
But you'll...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else from council? So more to come on this, we'll leave it in B?
Absolutely.
Okay. Next is item B two, council expenditure approval.
Mayor?
Councilmember, just move it to C?
Yes.
Okay, budget calendar?
C.
C? Resolution regarding designation of depositories and signatories?
C.
And supplemental appropriation for cable peg fund?
C.
Zoning map amendment, which was our public hearing tonight?
C.
And change order contract for emergency sewer repairs.
C.
C.
Okay, we will move on to our C agenda, going to C two, council expenditure approval.
Mayor?
Councilmember King.
I move to approve, to authorize the expenditure of no more than three hundred and sixty-five dollars each to attend the municipal, pardon me, Michigan Municipal League Elected Officers Academy from February twenty-sixth to the twenty-seventh, in accordance with the city charter.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember King, supported by Councilmember Lynch. So far, I think we have Councilmember McCarge that wants to go to this?
And myself.
And Councilmember King, anybody else? Who?
I do.
And Councilmember Kerwin. Okay, and...
The only thing here is, as far as getting any kind of a lowered rate, it's, we're beyond that point.
It may not be. Call.
You think so?
If I called it.
Did you?
I called it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? This, for the residents, this is Michigan Municipal League puts on a seminar for legal framework for leadership roles and responsibilities, financial management, and planning and zoning, and we have three council members that want to attend that, so that's what this is for. Anybody from the general public? Mr. Buckner?
I don't knock the fact that they, she can gain more knowledge from this, but you subline miss about the expense. Where does the expense come from that pays for their stay while they're in Frankenmuth? What funds, does that come out of the general funds, or it come out of the?
I believe it comes out of the general fund.
Okay.
Yep. Anybody else? Ms. Masti?
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye, motion passes seven zero. Item C three, budget calendar for fiscal year sixteen seventeen.
Mayor?
Ms. Lynch?
I move to approve the budget calendar for fiscal year two thousand sixteen seventeen, as presented.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Lynch, supported by Councilmember Squires. Discussion from the table? Got a lot of dates on here, everybody, got a copyright. From the general public? Mr. Jones? Could I get a copy of that? Yeah, we can make you a copy. Thank you. Just leave your name, we'll try to get you one. Okay, anybody else? Ms. Masti?
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye, motion passes seven zero. Item C four, resolution regarding designation of depository and signatory. Councilmember Squires?
I move to approve the revised resolution regarding designation of depositories and signatories to add multi-bank securities to the list of authorized depositories.
Support.
Support from Councilmember King. Any comments from the table? From the general public? Ms. Masti?
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye, motion passes seven zero. Item C five, supplemental appropriation for cable peg fund.
Mayor?
Councilmember McCarge?
I move to approve a supplemental appropriation to the cable peg fund, increasing the revenues and expenditures in the amount of seventeen thousand one hundred dollars.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Kerwin. Discussion from the table?
Mayor? Just so that the residents know, this increase of the, to this budget, comes from a grant from the Family Resource Center. It's part of the monies they received for communication, so it came from a grant.
Anybody else from the table? General public?
Monica gets those grants, so...
Come up to the podium, please.
That's a grant from Monica, and I've been singing her praises since she's came to our city, because she is one great person that helps this city all the time. Don't shake your head at me, Jaylee Lynch.
I'm shaking, yes.
Thank you.
I'm agreeing.
Okay, absolutely, she is great, and we're glad to have her. Anybody else from the general public? Ms. Masti?
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye, motion passes seven zero. Item C six, the zoning map amendment, which was part of our public hearing tonight?
A mayor?
Councilmember King?
I move to adopt an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Garden City, rezoning from R three multiple family to C three general business. The vacated alley between property identified as parcels, three five zero zero four nine nine zero zero three zero seven zero four, and three five zero zero four zero four zero zero nine zero three zero zero, and three five oh oh four zero zero nine one three oh zero, more commonly known as three one four five oh Ford Road, and three one four four one, and three one four three three on Crowder Avenue.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Discussion from the table? From the general public? Ms. Betts, I missed Betts, Ms. Masti?
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Councilmember Walker. I'm sorry, Mayor Walker.
Motion passes seven zero?
Got him back.
You got me back.
Not on purpose.
Okay, C seven, change order number one?
Mayor?
Councilmember Squires?
I move to approve change order number one, in the amount not to exceed fifty-one thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-seven cents, in accordance with the correspondence from Hennessy Engineers Incorporated, dated February second, two thousand sixteen.
Support. Support from Councilmember Jacobs. Discussion from the table?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, council will recall that I came before council, this was an emergency purchase, that we had to bypass the usual process. I did notify council at the time, I believe I estimated this to be fifty fifty, five thousand dollars, it actually came in considerably higher. And Hennessy earned their paycheck over the last few weeks by working on this contractor and got the price down to what we really expected it to be. This was a contractor who was already in town, doing business, had already bid out a major project, so we felt like they were going to be the best price that we could get, and this repair was a major repair that we had to tend to immediately.
Anybody else from the table? From the general public?
How come so expensive?
Well, I'll read you what they did. Behind Hungry Howies on Ford Road, the old rallies, we had a collapsed sewer, a hundred and forty feet long. They also had a repair, removal of trees, TV in, televising the pipe to find that. They had to remove a fence, replace a fence, replace a sanitary lead. And then a few weeks later, farther down behind Kentucky Fried Chicken, another hundred and fifty feet of collapsed sewer and clogged with grease deposits. Same thing, tree branches, removal of salvage, replacement of fencing, removal and replacement of active service leak connections for Kentucky Fried Chicken, and the residential properties on Harrison and on Crowder. So you're talking hundred and fifty, hundred and forty, just about two hundred and ninety feet of collapsed sewer.
How come so very expensive?
Well, it's been in since the fifties and sixties, and we had to replace it.
I can't, I'm...
Excavating it, it's costly, it's a costly repair.
Money, I can't, they bundle.
Yep.
Bundle of money.
Comes out of the water fund to pay for that, too. Sewer water fund. Anybody else? Ms. Masti?
Councilmember Squires.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch.
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Aye.
Mayor Walker.
Aye, motion passes seven zero. At this time, we will move on to public comments for items that were not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name. This is your opportunity to make a comment and state, or a statement. It is not the time to engage back and forth with council members. Anybody wishing to speak? Mr. Buckner?
Al Buckner, fifteen sixteen, Middlebelt. I want to give praise to Judge Hammer for making the decision this afternoon, which is in favor of the homeowners, and the battle continues on. Mr. Mayor, last meeting, your little tickle town you had up here about me being so negative, but yet you sound so positive, I guess that's the way you look at it. I'm not concerned so much about you being disrespectful to me, but to the office you hold, I do. And another thing, I just want to set you straight on a couple of things. Yes, I do advocate a lot of different things in the city, and that's my God-given right, and I will continue to do that. And just make sure you get your facts straight. I've been coming up here almost four years, it's not two thousand seven or two thousand eight. Now, I just got through talking about accountability and transparency last week, and then you come up here and spill all that out. I don't know where that came from, evidently you didn't hear what I said. I don't understand why it's so hard to understand. I think what it is, one reason why you're afraid I'm going to get people to start thinking on their own, and when people just sit back and idle and just hear things, when they start to think, then they start to act. This past week, I got a couple of responses, because I put Ray Weisick's speech up on Facebook in regards to public hearing. And two senior ladies messaged me on Facebook, one of them being a retired teacher of regards to the city, and I would like to read one. Says, "I find the mayor's tone with Mr. Weisick extremely appalling and disrespectful. I have the othermost respect for Mr. Weisick, and I'm surely thankful for his service to the city of Garden City, thankful for good people who care about the community, wise-up politicians, and give due respect to caring, knowledgeable citizens, who you supposedly serve." Now, this came from the teacher, and she goes, "I agree. The mayor has a condescending attitude toward Mr. Weisick, whether you agree or disagree with any citizen who speaks at a public hearing, a mayor and council, she show respect for their citizens." In two days, that got over five hundred people seeing the post. As of today, it was six hundred and thirty-nine. Mrs. Lynch, last week you made a comment, in your famous word, says, "Doesn't seem as it seems", and you were talking about the businesses in Garden City compared to Westland and Dearborn Heights. So let's just put the facts out there, you being an educator, knowing the fact that when you do a book report, you bring out the facts, you bring them out true and present it, okay? And I just want to give some figures here, because I did some research myself, and apples to apples, I don't see it. You compared us to Westland, saying that we're fourteen point three percent, when Westland is thirty-seven point three percent. Well, one thing I'd like to know, how many times have you drove up and down Ford Road? How many times have you seen the businesses? Kim Doyle, who sits here tonight, can come out on her sidewalk and see four buildings that are closed. A couple of them that's been closed for I don't know how many years, okay? If you go from Auster Road to Vanoy, which is two point seven miles, and I'm not going to break it down, but I'm just going to tell you this, you got fifty-two empty businesses. Fifty-two of them, okay, a lot of them for years. I know for a fact, you've got seven major businesses in the city here that are up for sale. They're looking to leave Garden City, and they would if someone would buy them. Now, let's get back to the, to the figures I was talking about. And Kevin Hunt may want to hear this, because this is based on two thousand and thirteen data dot com. Garden City at that time had twenty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-two residents. Westland had eighty-six thousand six hundred and two. Dearborn Heights had fifty-six thousand six hundred and twenty. Garden City square miles is five point eight six. Westland is twenty. Dearborn Heights is eleven point seven. So when you're going to compare us to other cities, like I said, make sure it's apples to apples, and not sour grapes to blackberries. Thank you.
Mr. Weisick?
Mr. Buckner brought this up, so I'll get to the chase here. Last week, Mayor, we had quite a set to about a public hearing. You said, "I could not ask a question, and you would not give an answer." So we went back and forth that length. Mr. Moller came today, first person up here, asked a question, and you answered it. Asked a question, and you answered it. I had to set up quips and a few other comments. And just by happenstance, my first one is, when is a, when is a public hearing not a public hearing? Obviously, when it's held in Garden City. What three little words you'll, will you never hear at this council, or by this council? I vote no. What words do you... What words did you hear the mayor utter a while back? "We are not Detroit." Where's the worst place to go in Garden City when you have a problem? City Hall? What do you think council's favorite food is? Pizza, of course, of course. Mrs. King really flubbed up reading a motion last month. We must be patient. She's only in her third year of her term. Mrs. King read off the rules of conduct at meeting recently. It sure was well-needed. A well-needed reminder for the rest of the council members to behave themselves. Shucks. No more singing or dancing for Mike Jones. No more singing or dancing for Mike. Sorry, Mike. This council had to make a choice to help our residents or to help rich Oakland and McComb County developers. Guess who they chose? Guess who they chose to help? Hey, what does Garden City and Travis Bay have in common? Travis City and Garden City. What do they have in common? Obviously, cherry picking, cherry picking. The big difference being, up there, they pick cherries. Down here, this council, cherry picks homes. Cherry picks homes. One last night, one last note, excuse me, who can never forget the mayor's disgraceful ejection of a highly decorated war veteran. The irony of all this was this veteran came to try to give some assistance in a very bad situation. His second appearance, trying to get the thing done. And the mayor ejected him. And of course, every time there's a veteran's doing that, the mayor's up there summarizing great speeches. In summary, I hope all of the residents support our homeowners fighting for their homes. If it isn't going to be the council helping, the entire population of the city has to do the job that they're not living up to the oath they took. This council failed when they could have headed off these difficulties. I said, "You could do it easily and you could do it quickly." No action. And now we find ourselves in legal battle that who knows what it's going to cost this city? Who knows what it's going to cost every person in this city? Because we have a bunch of hard-hits sitting there at that table. In court, Mr. Buckler alluded today, and I happened to be there, when Judge Hammer made a decision. And it was a victory for the homeowners.
Fifteen seconds, sir.
They are on their way to securing justice. I appeal to all of the people in this city to help them out in their time of great need. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mrs. Weisick?
I've come speaking differently. Blessed are the neat, for they will inherit the earth. Blessed are the poor, for they will see the face of God. I thought we could use a little scripture in here. Another famous saying is that a man's house is his castle. If it's a two-bedroom woodhouse, or it's a brick house, or no matter what it is. You people all have nice houses, there's plenty of people in Garden City. I lived and had a little small wooden house at one time. You don't come and kick them out of their homes. Not in our city do they get any consideration. Now, our city manager stated at a council meeting that they would get rid of these houses. Councilman Kerwin and the city manager said they would get Mr. Kerwin's truck, cement truck, and tear bulldoze down those houses. Then the city manager said he found out he couldn't do that. It's more complicated than that, really. I address this because our city manager will soon have to find out where water source comes from. Our water source. As he, as he mentioned, he has a handle on it. Will our citizens be informed before or after you make the decision? Mayor, you have to step up and inform your citizens. And yes, the saying that a man's home is his castle is a true statement. And I hope you do it in Garden City.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mayor Kevin Hunt, Garden City. Just want to cover a few items again tonight. Everything gets bannered around all over the place out there on the internet. The more you look at it, the more you know that ninety percent of it is no good, maybe ten percent's the truth. The Garden City Taxpayers Committee. To me, there's an oxymoron out there. This group was formed by a group that did not pay their taxes. Everyone out there on this committee will be asking for your signatures to remove the ordinance that allows the city to transfer ownership of homes foreclosed on by Wayne County to recoup part of our tax monies and water bills that were not paid over a three-year period of time. They stayed inflated retail numbers on their paperwork of what their house is supposedly worth, not what was owed on it. In their petition, not tax money that the city lost. No, the city lost nothing. They're trying to recoup some of the funds, make sure these homes are rehabilitated and sold to individuals, not to an out-of-state investment company that sits in a house and does nothing. Does anybody remember this as it was going on? It's out there, you can go back and watch them again. If you are a taxpayer, this will never affect you, only if you don't pay your taxes for three years in a row. Want to ask for your signature, laugh at them, send them on their way. The taxpayers of Garden City do not have a problem. Change the name of your committee. As of all the other statements and lies that are out there with this committee do not even make sense. The ones costing the city, the unneeded expense, are the ones that get up here every other week and one other person behind the scenes that lost to Mayor Walker that have a vendetta against the mayor, council, and city manager. That's where our money's going to go for this lawsuit. Emails from Mr. Murray. There's one posted out there, and the most ridiculous explanation to it there ever was. Supposedly, I put the email right on there for you to read, it's posted right on that site. And then they turn around and say that Mr. Murray gave permission to break into those homes. Wasn't in there at all. He let these people know, the developer know, that if you're going to go into them, let us know ahead of time, give us a heads up, because the citizens in this city will call it in. This man's thinking ahead of the game. Why do we need to send police out on a high priority run where he's going to have to send everybody he's got? Because he might have a home invasion slash B and E on his hands. Just give them a heads up so that they knew ahead of time what was going on, those people may be going in. As for the occupied homes, didn't say anything about breaking into them. What it said was that those developers had the opportunity, if they would like ahead of time, to start contacting these homeowners to let them know what was going on. But boy, we've got it down, is the chief here is breaking the law and he's giving them the right to go kick in the doors on occupied homes? Read what you post yourself on the internet. Another email from Mr. Murray tells council not to talk to people suing them. Wow, what a new concept. No one ever is to talk with the opposing team when there's a lawsuit involved. Only writing what they should be writing. And we're going to go back to that cherry picking. Continues to come up every other week. The last meeting was stated that all were occupied homes. No, 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 they were not. One in a previous slideshow that Mr. Murray showed, vacant home, cannot remember the name of the street. Central Avenue, vacant. Warren Road, vacant, and probably more. These three I can state as a true known fact, not what comes up here half the time talking, were vacant properties. Two of them for over three years. With time to research this, there's probably more out there that I don't know about that were vacant. And I'm glad to see the judge has stopped the gag order on the elected officials, Act two sixty-nine slash Bill five seventy-one. This will give the municipalities and school districts a chance to explain ballot issues and not just the lies that would be presented by others here at this podium. Some of them come to this podium only like free speech for themselves, not for others. And real quickly, Mr. Jeff Dole, great job. When we got overwhelmed with water to take up the Flint, this man with a phone call came up with four trailers, two tractors, and the men to drive them right away. These are the kind of people we need in the city, not all the naysayers that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Dole?
Jeff Dole, Akola Street. Even though all this talk about the water and all that is quite humbling. It's never one individual, it always takes a team. There was hundreds of people involved in that water drive for Flint. I think those are the people that need the credit. The organizers that put it together, the elementary schools, the middle schools, the high schools, the churches, the communities, everybody came together and made it happen. And on another note, I've been here forty-seven years in the city. By far, we have the best city manager, council people, and mayor. Please stay positive, continue to move us forward in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Mr. Seiko?
Carl Seiko, three zero four one four Pierce. I've been on vacation for a couple of weeks, so I missed the last council meeting, sorry. What I'm up here, basically, I'm going to reiterate what the last gentleman said, that, you know, to date, Chief Murray, you've been doing a great job, keep up the good work. As much as the naysayers that come up here and spread the lies, it's one lie after another, it gets old. The thing that probably really bothers me is that what's going to happen is I see, you see it coming, is that there's a petition going around, I haven't read the meat and potatoes of it, but it was kind of relayed up here earlier. It's a fear tactic that you're getting thrown out here to the rest of the public. The public is being told you're getting sued. Oh my God, it was another eighteen million dollar situation, and we're going to get sued to the end of the days, and we're all going to go in debt again, and you've got to pass a law now, because you've got to sign this little paper and get it onto ballot. The whole thing is a bunch of garbage, as far as I'm concerned. Process was followed through the county, the process was followed through the city. Everything was done according to book. People didn't pay their taxes, that's what's going on here. And so people that didn't pay their taxes came up here and villainized everybody on council and went after them, called them devils, and then what they did was, they asked for mercy. They didn't get either. Now, all of a sudden, it's going to go on a ballot, and we're going to try and ask the community to give us a house for free. Because that's what it amounts to. I didn't pay my taxes, but I'm on the down and I can't do it, you're going to pay my house for me. That's what is going on right now. So when you, when you see somebody come up to you with a ballot asking you to sign it, or not a ballot, a petition, to sign the petition, to get something on the ballot in the next election if it happens, this team here is a negative team that's been hunting for garbage to just get behind and say, "Look at us, we're the pro-tax people." And I'm telling you, it's getting old. Really, I come up here and I watch it and I see it, it's getting really old. So the argument that I throw out there is that you, as the population in the Garden City, get educated. Don't listen to the naysayer that comes up here every week, or every two weeks, and spills his stuff.
Only speak when you're at the podium, that's your last warning.
So, again, don't just listen to the naysayers. Get educated as a citizen of Garden City and find out the information, what's facts and what is it. It's that simple. And my thing is, it's funny is that if it does make the ballot, I welcome it as a vote, because it will be interesting to see when the city does get educated on it, how bad that ballot will go down in flames. I'm just, my honest opinion, there's logical, smart people in this city that will get educated, and it will get shot down. I mean, you go ahead and put it on the ballot, it'll be interesting, because I'd like to see the numbers behind it. Scare tactics, go for it. I'll be up here every week to tell everybody it's a bunch of garbage. That's all I got to say. Oh. Tomorrow, you guys all know what tomorrow is, right? It's got to give something positive out of this. It's punchki day. I'm Polish, so I'm, I'm a big time on Polish traditions, and so try not to eat too many. Chief, you've lost a ton of weight, I guess you can have more punchki, right? Have a nice day, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh. You're gone. You know, we ask people to follow the rules, that speak when you're at the podium. We gave you your chance, and you got to talk from your seat after you've been warned, so. Okay, city managers report?
Thank you, Your Honor, just a few things this evening. Of course, this very mild winter has been pretty easy on our DPS. You know, the guys that we're proud of that get out there and get those streets clean. This has been a pretty easy year, but I don't want, or season. I don't want anybody to think that they're just sitting around resting and waiting for the next snowfall. They've seized this opportunity, the fairly mild temperatures, to go out and start taking down trees that would have been part of the next spring's program. They're nearly done, actually. I think it was estimated they're at eighty, eighty-five percent at this point. So they're, they're already ahead of that. I know that there's not a big cause for council members to go over to the DPS building on a regular basis, but DPS is also remodeling their office area. For those of you who have visited the building, which we all know is an old ratty, and I, I mean ratty in the truest sense of the word, building, they, they recognized that citizens had to come in through a vehicular path and deal with a lot of congestion, dirt, exhaust, that sort of thing. So Director Roney put together a little redesign project, and they're making great headway. It looks great, if you get a chance, stop by, you'll see a new set of doors on the front of that building. I think drywall was going up today. This is all work being done by our DPS workers. They're also seizing the opportunity to take care of a lot of things around the city that they usually don't get the chance to do, because they're busy engaged in the work on roads and water and that sort of thing. But with a small amount of main breaks, very little roadwork to be done. Trust me that they are not sitting back and just resting and relaxing, although they certainly deserve it. Also, Director Roney wanted me to mention to you that the, that the, I always forget what the first word is. The Alliance of Rouge Communities has put out a flyer that will be on our website. And Director Roney has some, some pet causes. Trees would be one of them. But the disposal of fats, oils, and greases is another one. We hear about it frequently at our, at our staff meetings when we come together. He wanted me to mention tonight, just as a public service, that there are other ways to dispose of fat, oil, and grease than pouring it down the drain. that there are other ways to dispose of fat, oil, and grease than pouring it down the drain. This is one of the problems that contributes to that major sewer collapse that we had. Those sewers over there require extra cleaning, so there's extra wear on those sewers. And that's what prompts their shorter life. You're encouraged not to pour fat, oil, or grease down the drain. Don't use hot water to rinse grease off your dishes and cookware and let it go down the drain. Don't throw disposable items, disposable wipes, down a drain or toilet because they don't dissolve and they'll clog. As he has demonstrated for us at more than one staff meeting, take your greasy pan and some newspaper and wipe it up. Throw it in the solid waste. Allow the grease to cool or solidify before throwing it in the trash. All of these tips will be on the website, and it really, it really does make sense. This is probably one of our greatest difficulties in the city is when sewers get clogged up by grease and the like. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember McCarge?
Just everyone should keep aware of a lot of things coming up in the city. The library will be having a Easter extravaganza. They're partnering with the Community Center in Kiwanis for an egg hunt for children three to twelve. And the flyers will be out soon. Tickets are going on sale on March 1st. They will go fast. But it's lunch with the Easter bunny and then an Easter egg hunt. But there's also on March 8th at the Garden City High School, the Garden City Key Club is having an empty bowl dinner. And what this is, it's ten dollars. You go in and you get a bowl that, a ceramic bowl that the art club makes. And you actually do get dinner. You get a bowl of soup, actually several types of soup if you want. But the money goes, the Key Club has a program where they help feed the hungry. And that is what they use these funds for. So that is March 8th. And I know that a lot of things are coming up with the budget meetings. Please be aware of when they are. The public is welcome to attend so you can get the whole picture of what's going on. Not all the meetings are televised. We just have a give and take. It's a point, it's a time when I feel like I could make a comment that maybe even be way off, out of, you know, way off. But we can give and take, and we can discuss, and we can find out what our goals are going to be. So the public, again, is invited to attend those meetings. Other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember King?
I think she said it all. Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes, as Ms. McCarge said, you don't have to come up here and complain that you missed the entire budget session. It should be on the website, I believe. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if you'd like to know anything about it, nobody's hiding anything. Please come and join us. There's going to be a lot of different dates and meetings. But don't come after and say that you were never notified because it's all above board, nothing hidden. Also, Wednesday is Ash Wednesday, the beginning of Lent. So Friday's in Lent. The old St. Rayfields, which is St. Thomas the Apostle, will have their fish dinners. I think it's at four thirty or five o'clock.
Four thirty.
Four thirty. And I guess they run until they're out. And it, just so everybody knows, they're really, really good. And I think that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. You're making me hungry. Councilmember Squire?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Mr. Murray, thank you for talking about the pom-poms winners. Garden City Middle School, Garden City High School varsity. On becoming state champs, congratulations. And also, the Garden City College Team Atomic became state champs for the fourth year in a row. Also, on January 30th, there was a Uker tournament that was put on for the benefit of our home pantry. And on the following day, the 31st, at Joe D's Bar, there was a broomstick pool tournament. And between those two, they raised over five thousand dollars to present to our home pantry. And I want to thank everybody that was involved in it, everybody that worked it. It was just amazing. So as Jeff and Carl said, this is a great community. You know, they give back. They give back. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Lynch?
I just wanted to re-echo the sentiments of Jeff Dole as he said, our community is wonderful, working together on the Friends of Flint to collect all that water. All people that put in the work behind the scenes, that got the water in one area, that transported it up to Redford, that got it from Redford to Flint, that unloaded the cars. There were so many people behind the scenes, as well as all of those that donated the water. And we're just, and money, that's right. Because they picked up another seven truckloads of water to send up. So that was fantastic.
Read that for Kim Dole.
Yes, I'd be happy. Win a Valentine's Day package Willie the Cupig photo contest. It says, "Sweet talk your Valentine into posing for a picture with Willie, our Garden City Cupig, located at the Commons at the northwest corner of Middle Belt and Ford Road, for a chance to win a free Valentine's package valued at over one hundred dollars." This is coming from downtown DDA. And so all you need to do is get ahold of Kim and take your pictures over to her. Enter you into the contest. And Valentine's Day is next Sunday, so the contest is running short. So make sure you get out there while the weather's still good before the snow comes. And one little thing, I don't know if it's a battery in the clock or what happened, but that clock is almost an hour behind. If there's a way we could get somebody that's tall to check it, we'd appreciate it. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacobs?
I have nothing at this time.
Deputy Treasurer, Masti, you have any?
Two things. First, I'd like to thank you for your patience with me today and my one little flub. And secondly, I'd like to encourage the people to get out and vote on Tuesday, March 8th, for the Presidential Preference Primary. And absentee voter applications are available in the clerk's office or online.
Thank you. You did a great job tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, I have nothing. No further business. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.